Hi, everybody. Hi, David.
Hello.
Hey, Adrian.
Hello.
Hi, John.
Hi, Craig.
I got six thirty.
Oh, hey, there's Trevor. Howdy. And Jeff and Dennis. Hi.
The meeting to order. This is the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for May three two thousand and twenty-one. Um, I have to read my little script here. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. We appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Planning commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. Recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Can we call the roll, please, Kathleen?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Maza?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Wile?
Here.
Chair Jennings?
Here.
You have a quorum.
We're now at the portion where we approve the agenda. John, you want to do the honors on that?
Yes, I would like to approve the agenda. The resolution to approve the agenda, as staff recommends, with item four A to a date uncertain. Item four B to May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and item four C to May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Is there a second?
A second, Tab.
Yes.
Commissioner, there's a recommendation also to continue item five A. Is that right, Adrian?
Five A. Yeah, to date uncertain.
Okay. That you amend your motion to that effect, John? And the second or goes along with that? All right, you call the roll, please, Kathleen?
It'd be staff's recommendation and then item five A can continue to a date uncertain.
Correct.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Jeffrey Jennings, I'm sorry, Commissioner Chair Jennings. Sorry, I just read what was on there. My apologies. No respect intended. Disrespect intended.
All right. And I'll give that a yes. Okay, so that that's unanimous. The report on the posting of the agenda, Kathleen?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. Takes us to item two, written in oral communications from the public. Do we have any speakers?
We do have one speaker. Albert Adonian, Adonian.
All right, would you unmute him?
I don't actually see him in the meeting.
Oh, perhaps he.
All right, well, maybe if he shows up later, you can alert me and we'll bring him back on. That takes us to item, if he is the only speaker, we that it takes us to item two B, planning commission and staff comments and inquiries, commissioners. I don't see any hands up here. That's unusual. John?
Okay, a couple of follow-ups. Last meeting, we asked Richard about when Nobu and Soho were going to be resolved. And he said he'd come back to us for that. Is there any any coming back to us?
You know, Adrian?
Hi.
Yes, we're still working on that, actually. There is a traffic realignment plan that is being reviewed, and we are working with Caltrans to have that approved. So as soon as that's resolved, we will be bringing the item back to you.
Okay, I just want to caution you that June is coming. Second question, has any work been done on having a planning meeting with in the city hall? Especially the AUD, ADUs.
I think we're waiting for city council to make that determination. It would be up to them to to make that call, and then I think planning commission will just follow.
Okay. Now, I don't know if Dennis wanted to ask this again, but he asked about dump trucks on the highway, double trailer dump trucks. Did we ever track any of that down?
Yeah, I started to follow one of the trucks and yeah, I had something else. I had to call in and had to turn around and go back, so I've kept an eye on them. There haven't seemed to be as quite as many as there were the last two weeks ago when we met, but still an issue. Thank you, John.
Okay, and then the last one is I wanted to know the status of the Sycamore Park Gate now that the coastal commission's weighed in on it. Is it is it dropped? Is it coming back? Is it going to come back in a different form, or do you have any idea?
I can I can speak to that, Adrian. So, as if you remember, this application was scheduled to come before the planning commission, but it was noticed as being only appealable to the city council. MRCA challenged that determination. The city began the process for resolution of the appealability issue, which involves making a director's determination, then seeking the executive director of the coastal commission's determination on the issue as well. The coastal commission executive director's determination, as related by their local staff, was that it was appealable to the coastal commission. And we disagreed with that, and the resolution of that thing goes to the coastal commission for determination. That hearing happened April fourteenth approximately, and the coastal commission ruled that the application was appealable to the coastal commission. So at this point in time, that's the determination. The applicant is considering options at this point in time, and then we will see what they make a decision on. Independently, they also have a lawsuit pending to resolve the rights to access up and down Via Escondido and up and down through that area based on a number of different theories, but just scheduled to go to trial in early September, so that may be a factor also.
Does that trial involve the city of Malibu? Is it just Sycamore Park?
No, that is a that is a private dispute between the neighborhood and the MRCA about what the the rights are up and down that road, which would obviously impact the application.
Thank you.
Okay, who else? Craig?
Yeah, this is a kind of a question of historical legislative intent that I, well, I think Commissioner Jennings, you'll probably have a comment on this. I had an exchange with Adrian about setbacks, and it got me wondering about the intent of the setbacks and that I always thought of them as something that had reference to a front yard and a street and how far from the street you are. But he suggested that in a number of cases, we measure them just to the property lines. And so even when you have a road easement that crosses the property, and he pointed out a number of cases, a number of neighborhoods, that we don't measure the setback between the house and the road. We measure it between the house and the the far property line that is beyond the road, and it just got me sort of wondering what is the legislative intent of that setback if not to, I mean, obviously, you want to be setback from your adjacent property owners, but I would think being setback from a road is also a really important consideration, and I'm wondering why that was that ever discussed?
Talking about legislative intent from, what, thirty years ago?
Well, I don't know when.
That was those those provisions were put in with with what was then referred to as the interim zoning ordinance. You know, it's it's very confusing, and and I know it's been a confusing subject for a lot of years. And when I was after the fire, I had to go around and figure out whether what my setbacks were, and and part of the problem is that that some of the terminology is 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 sort of derived from typical suburban square lot or rectangular lot situations. And and I know that, for example, the staff has over the years evolved an intricate method of determining setbacks for lots that are trapezoidal or, you know, just all kinds of different things. And and so I think it's something that's just sort of evolved over time. And as far as there being any discussion of the details of it in the at the city council level, not that I can remember.
Just seems like it could yield a perverse result in the right circumstances.
Well, there are a lot of, I mean, you've seen some of them where I can't remember, there was one backup in Sarah Retreat that we had not too long ago that had a very weird shaped lot, and and it was just sort of a mystery to figure out what are we setting back from? I I can't tell you any more than that. The details of it are beyond me, but but I know that that's that that staff has struggled with this issue a lot, and mainly because the concept comes from a sort of an orderly planned rectangular lot subdivision idea that just doesn't apply here.
Yeah. Okay, well.
Craig?
Letting it in saying, yeah.
Look in the, if you look in the interpretation manual, there's a diagram on how they calculate it for oddball lots, but that's
Yeah.
We got that we had a house on, I think it was Via Escondido, where the house actually somehow ended up on the street. We made him push back. It gets very weird, as Jeff said.
Well, I've I've seen that geometrical stuff. I just wondered what, you know, what it is that we're setting back from, obviously, the pop property boundary, but if there's a road going across it, it seems like you'd want to consider that somehow, but I guess not.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Dennis?
Just kind of going along on PCH there, you know, the case development that's there. I I remember in my corporate days how important it was when you're going to build a community, and that's what is going on there. And how nice you want it to look on the outside as you go down the road and be inviting, you know, to come in and look and whatnot. So my thought is, and I'm sure this won't be popular with the owner of that property, but no matter, I feel that it's about time that we quit looking at that gray concrete wall. And they need to do something. Land redesign a beautiful design for that. It needs to get used. It needs to be put on. I don't want to look at their concrete wall anymore. I remember when I did my crash wall and I came into at Toona Canyon, my first turn, and I came into then Director Blue and 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 Richard Malika, and they said, just make sure it blends. So I did that, and you guys all see that when you drive by, but I just think it's time. I mean, when you build a community like that, you're supposed to make the outside real nice, so it brings in the people, so I think it's time for something to happen on that.
Nice.
Okay.
Eye to beholder.
Right. All right, staff comments?
Um, just a couple of things. One is just to go back to the point about setbacks. I do want to clarify one thing about that is that there's also an interpretation about measuring setbacks from road easements, and this is when the property is immediately in front of a road easement, and the road easement is actually the front yard of the property. What Commissioner Hill and I talked about is in cases where you have a row that bisects the property in half, and if we create if we create basically two ways of measuring setbacks, and it would be a front yard setback from both sides of the street, for example. And we have, we have never done that in the past. That would be a new thing if we did that. But if we only apply setback on one side, then it creates this no man's land on the opposite side of the street, and a lot of times that's where they put their accessory structures and other things. So that's the reason for that. And in regards to the case, we'll look into that. We'll find out if there is a condition. I presume there will be one about materials that will need to be used for exterior walls. So we'll take a look into that and bring back what we find to the commission next time.
Great, thank you.
Okay, can we move on then to the business at hand? That brings us to the consent calendar. We've only got one item. It's the approval of minutes. Anybody want to pull that?
I move the
John?
I move the approval of item three B one.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it. All Kathleen, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. That brings us to item five B. This is the wireless communication facility. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes, hi. Good evening, Chair Jennings, members of the planning commission. The next item or the only item for tonight is Uh, the next item, or the only item before tonight is, uh, for a proposed installation of a new wireless communications facility in the public right of way that will be installed by Verizon Wireless. The project requires a CDP number twenty dash zero four three, a variance number twenty dash zero two eight, and a site plan review number twenty dash zero five nine. Next slide, please. Project is located in the northern parkway of the Pacific Coast Highway Public Right Of Way. It is directly in front of a commercial parking lot used to service visitors to the Malibu Pier and nearby commercial businesses. The project is within a hundred feet of the building occupied by Aviator Nation. It is also within a hundred and forty feet of the Malibu Pier and approximately three hundred feet from Surf Rider Beach. Next slide, please. Project proposes the following. SoCal Edison is to replace the streetlight pole that will be topped with Verizon Wireless's wireless communications facility, and will reach a height of thirty-four feet nine inches. Uh, Verizon will install the omnidirectional canister antenna on top of the pole, and they will also install one remote radio unit, which will be concealed inside a shroud below the antenna, but also atop the pole. Uh, the project also requires the installation of three handholds inside the, the concrete sidewalk of the right of way. One handhold is for Verizon's fiber optic lines, one for the power disconnect switch, and one for SoCal Edison distribution. Project also proposes two discretionary requests. Variance twenty dash zero two eight is for replacement streetlight, is to allow the replacement streetlight pole, which will host the wireless facility over twenty-eight feet in height, and, uh, an SPR number twenty dash zero five nine for the installation of the wireless communications facility in the public right of way. Next slide, please. So these next two slides will cover, uh, existing and proposed cellular coverage in the area. Uh, this one here is the existing coverage. Um, the legend down there is green means good, yellow is fair, and pink is poor, according to Verizon's coverage interpretation. Next slide, please. So here is the proposed cellular coverage. Um, as you can see, there's not much added to the area in terms of improved coverage. However, Verizon Wireless aims to increase their cellular capacity to the highly traversed region. The area is in a central core of commercial and recreational activities. Many visitors come to the Malibu Pier and Surf Rider Beach, as well as other businesses along this stretch of PCH. Because the area is highly traversed, staff was willing to accept the location, even though Verizon's coverage maps did not signify a lack of general coverage in the area. Next slide, please. Here you see a site plan for the proposed replacement pole and the handhole boxes. The replacement pole will be thirty feet east of the original location. The application requires a site plan review for placement within the public right of way. Next slide, please. Here is the elevation, uh, before and after. Uh, the current pole is thirty-one feet above grade, and the new pole with the antenna will be thirty-four feet nine inches. Um, the project requires a variance because, uh, the project will replace a pole, so a new pole will be erected with, uh, wireless facility over twenty-eight feet in height. Um, in order to maintain, uh, in order for the streetlight to maintain a similar aesthetic in terms of the pole's diameter, and, and also in terms of the streetlights position, uh, staff is recommending approval of the variance. Verizon could have proposed a twenty-eight foot tall, which would have been consistent with the LIP, but because they were willing to relocate on a replacement streetlight pole, the development is more consistent with LIP chapter three point one six point one oh, which prefers utilizing existing infrastructure. The antenna and accessory equipment will also be painted to match the pole, which is in line with the chapter's steffing preferability. Next slide, please. Here is a photo simulation before and after of what the, uh, new pole and facility would look like in real life. Next slide, please. In summary, staff recommends adoption of resolution twenty-one thirty-seven, approving the project as proposed. Um, I and the applicant are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Disclosures of ex-party communications. Uh, Craig?
Um, I had a conversation with Nicole McGinley just about, uh, things in general, uh, didn't learn anything, not in the staff report.
John?
Nothing.
Dennis?
Nothing.
David?
Nothing.
Nothing for me. Questions of staff? David?
Um, when you say that the project is not going to increase, um, coverage, but it will help with capacity, can you explain in layman's terms what that means, and whether our consultant found that to be a justifiable reason for the request?
Yeah, sure, I can go first, and then our, our consultant is available, Bob Ross, um, he can speak after me. Um, so, what we, we do ask for coverage maps to kind of display a need, and usually that would suffice if they could display that there was a coverage gap in their service. Uh, and in this case, they could not prove that. We have asked for this application and for a lot of others for additional materials that could prove this capacity issue. So this is something they mentioned in their narrative, that it increases cellular capacity, but we have asked in the past for more hard evidence in terms of that. It have kind of been, not just Verizon, but a lot of the carriers have been more reluctant to provide us with that information. Um, and so we have used, we have consulted with our consultants, and they have kind of told us similar language where and sometimes coverage maps are not even required per the FCC, and other times it is not sufficient alone to, you know, disallow this, this location. And I don't know if Bob, Bob Ross wanted to add anything more from CMS.
Uh, can you unmute Robert Ross for me, Kathleen, or whoever is doing that? Can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay, do you have, have anything to add to that?
Yeah, y- y- yes, sir, I do, um. What you're going to see more is you're going to see the carriers are looking more at capacity. And what they are also doing is they're changing their frequencies, they're changing from the seven hundred to eight hundred, they're changing up to the thirty-five hundred, um, twenty-six hundred frequencies. Um, so the capacity and the range is cut down. So, when you say it doesn't look like they're going to cover more area, um, they're probably not, they're changing the frequencies that they're using for, uh, for voice and data service, and this is what I would call a fill insight, this is what they consider a small cell site.
Can I follow up on that? I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, when they approach us to do a project like this, do we, do you independently verify that there is a need for the increase in, um, if not in coverage and in capacity, I mean, how, how does a, a, a community, uh, determine that the, the need exists that the phone company says they need?
Well, there's a couple of ways that, that are done, there's a, a study that's, uh, along with it, there's an RFEME study that, uh, came along with this project, that tells you what frequencies that they're going to use, and, um, along with the, the general maps, but you also have to understand, you also know what the carriers are doing. Like I said, they're all moving, um, the Verizons of the world, and this particular one, Verizon is moving from the seven, seven hundred megahertz, they're moving to a different band for the voice service, okay? When you do that and your power is decreased, um, a macro site normally puts out about twenty watts, these sites are put out point five watts. So, you're going to lose coverage area. And, and unfortunately, unfortunately, sir, that, you know, that's, uh, that's part of my job is to make sure that I've got that covered for you, that, that, that you have that. For, for you as a layman, sir, unfortunately, um, that's not readily available.
Well, if, if you're saying you as the city's consultant independently verify that the request being made by Verizon is in fact needed, that's, that's really what I'm asking, not whether I as a um, and I guess secondly, my final point is just my pet peeve here. We got three very detailed letters, uh, two from law firms, one from Nicole, with, one of them has a dozen points in it, uh, from, that, uh, Verizon is requesting that we modify the approval because they don't agree with us, we got these, uh, late this afternoon. It is absurd to think that this group is going to be able to get through material this dense two hours before a meeting and digest it and be able to talk about it, and I, I guess I would simply put on notice anybody who has projects in front of us. Um, this is no way to run a railroad, and it won't get done well if this is when we get the information.
Yeah, I, um, I, I wanted to ask Tyler whether, um, typically when there is a debate about the details of the conditions that are going to be imposed, that's something that staff and the applicant work out in advance, and my question, Tyler, is whether you had advanced notice of these requested changes, there must be, what, a dozen of them or so? The requested changes and the details of the conditions, did you get advanced notice of this?
For this particular project, we received what you received today, but, um, they had similar comments on other projects we've approved, um, about our conditions pre, uh, pretty recently.
Okay, s- let me ask you this then, um, my immediate reaction when I got this was, okay, um, go back to staff and, and work it out, I mean, they, they work out the details, what, you know, what staff can agree with and what they can't. And then I realized that, oh, well, wait a minute, we've, we've got a ninety-day shot clock that's, that's supposed to be running, so if we were to kick this back to, uh, staff to work out on the details of this, would that, would that put us in jeopardy, uh, uh, violating the, the shot clock?
I'd have to run the numbers, but in, in all honesty, Chair Jennings, I, I believe I can, you know, touch on, on anything you need to touch on tonight if you need to make a decision, uh, if not, then yeah, we, we can go back and, and talk to them. I, um,
I'm, I, it's just a hypothetical, I don't know what, I'm not going to even say that I'm going to suggest that.
For an example, um, there were a couple ministerial approvals that we just did, in which case Verizon had similar comments on our conditions. We said, basically, take it or leave it, and, um, that's the way staff has interpreted that to this point, and
Okay.
we feel that we're going to make the same decision on, on this project and all the ones going forward.
Okay.
Yeah, Tyler, I mean, I was going to suggest if you had, if, if, if the issues raised had suggested any, staff to change its mind about any of these items, I know you've looked at it before, then if you could identify any changes you would recommend the commission make.
I, I have to go through each one, it's, a lot of it is just like, they, they want us to change the way conditions are written, so you know, in terms of, let's say, our condition number one, which is, um, you know, to release liability, they want us to modify the condition to say, only pay the city's reasonable expenses, things like that, but again, we've, we've used this language on multiple projects that they've agreed to. So, we don't feel the need to, to change this type of language.
The sta- staff is not recommending, uh, accepting any of the proposed changes from Verizon, is that correct?
Unless Adrian has something else, I, I don't think so.
Yeah, so one, one thing, I think, I just, one point I want to make is the fact that we're, we're using conditions that were approved by City Council in the urgency ordinance they adopted in December. So, all, all the conditions, uh, are exactly the same verbatim as they were, uh, you know, accepted by, by, uh, City Council, and so staff just feels uncomfortable making any changes to conditions that are in our ordinance. Uh, so that's the reason why we are not, uh, you know, suggesting that there be any ma- uh, changes made to these conditions.
If there was a, if there was a project-specific reason to make an adjustment to it, you would propose a, a, a change, but you don't see that in this case, would that be a fair reflection?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
Yeah, I just, on the point of whether continuance might be necessary for this reason, or any, any other reason that might come up, uh, also just the fact that the public hasn't had a chance to see any of this new material is something to consider, too.
Okay, John?
When I read that last letter from the, there were two letters, I believe, from the Verizon, but a lot of them seem to be a lot of legal stuff, and it's like, as Trevor mentioned, uh, well, one of them was, is it equitable for them to have to pay when we don't have to pay for the lawyers, things like that. That's not really cellphone stuff, that's legal stuff. Trevor, did you see anything in there that was something that we would lose in court, or something that doesn't matter, that we should change? And then my second question is, this is from Nicole McGinley's letter. It seems to me that this project was being complete before the ordinance went in.
Uh, let me stop you for just a second, we lost Dennis, or at least I've, I don't know whether D- Dennis is still in the meeting or not. I don't want to create any problems if he's not there, I don't see him. I, I see his name on my screen, but his, but his camera has blanked out, Dennis, can you hear me? Are you there, Dennis?
Can we unmute him?
Can we turn his camera on, see if he's there?
It says he's a co-host.
Yeah, but it's, it's blanked out.
Thank you for catching that, because, uh, we may want to pause to make sure he can participate.
Anybody have a phone?
Adrian, Kath- or Kathleen, can you try to raise Dennis?
I'm going to go ahead and try texting him now.
I'll try him.
Yeah, if you can, if you can ask him to log out of Zoom and come back in, because he is in a stuck, stuck position right now.
He's like me on May fifteen.
What happens, May fifteen?
Go your taxes.
You're in a stuck position.
Well, he's gone, so he must be coming back.
I texted him, so hopefully he logged out and will log back in shortly.
Read any good books lately?
Alex, Dennis is saying that he's trying, it won't let him back in.
Won't let him back in, uh, what does that mean exactly? Because I don't see him waiting.
Why don't you have him turn on YouTube so he can hear what we're asking him?
Alex, I'm going to, I'm going to send you his number, if, if you can call him and, and walk him through it, probably be the easiest.
Yep.
This is why we need meetings in person.
One of many reasons.
It's now saying you can embed him.
Uh, I think he's kinda, I get his name is coming back here, connecting to audio. It's trying to let him in.
Oh, he's down, he's down in the bottom right corner of my screen.
Yeah, I know, I've got him. Here he comes. See if we can get his camera up.
Can you hear us Dennis?
He seems to still be having some computer difficulties.
Okay, maybe we should just uh, what, take a recess, I give it. I'm, I'm not sure what to do. I mean, we could continue, we've got a quorum, um, but.
Yeah, but we, we want him familiar with the, the record and the public hearing.
Well, it doesn't show his mic being muted, so can he hear us?
And I think he's got a, it's more than the usual run of problems here.
Alex, are you on with him?
Oh my God.
No, I was, I was actually just about to email Kathleen and we'll see what's, what's going on here. Um, but it looks like he's, he's hung up. He needs to restart his computer.
Okay, maybe we wanna take a
Five minutes?
Yeah, we take five minutes. Commissioners, please uh, do not communicate to anyone. And uh, during the, during this period, and we'll see if we can get Dennis up and running.
Okay, we'll take a five minute break. Thank you.
Okay, okay, I'm in.
Okay, so actually, one thing I need you to do is um, are you, are you in on the phone or in on the computer?
Right now, I'm on the phone, but I'm looking at the computer. It came back in clear again. I don't know, but I'm not on there.
So on your computer, um, if you go down to the lower left where it has the little mute button or unmute button.
Right.
Um, if you can click up on there, click the little up arrow, and then the second from the bottom says leave computer audio.
Okay, so the bottom left corner, Alex, right now usually says mute or unmute, and it says audio.
Okay, so what happens when you click on that?
I don't know, we're gonna find out, aren't we? It says leave computer audio.
Click leave computer audio for me, click on that. Okay, now give me one second, merge you here. All right, you should be good to go. You're still on the phone, but the computer screen in front of you should be connected with your, with your audio and everything.
Okay.
So you should be able to use the mute and unmute that's on the screen and all that kind of fun stuff. So, sure, I think we're good to go.
Okay, great.
Okay, we're just not gonna see his picture, right?
Oh, we, we can try that. We, we should be able to try that and it should be okay, but it, it kinda looks to me like it, it's showing that he doesn't have a camera connected on there right now. So I think we might just hear him.
Okay, John, are you there? Where's John? I see John's name, but I don't see John's.
Oh, it says, now it says start my video.
There he comes.
I think David's in the same boat, there you go.
All right, there we go. So uh, John, I interrupted you when this started up.
First I had asked Trevor, and this is part of that, uh, about whether some of this language in the lawyer letter was just legal straightening things out. And I believe uh, we got the answer, this is what we, we, the um, what was determined by the ordinance. My question now is, we got a letter from Nicole McGinley saying that this was covered by the ordinance. And it seems when I read it, it sounded like it was deemed complete before the ordinance. So does that have any effect on what we're doing as far as that language goes? Or in general?
Sure, I, I, I can, I can pick up a little bit here. First, I wanna confirm for the record that uh, Commissioner Smith is participating, but he's uh, audio only due to technical difficulties, but he is um, present in the meeting and able to participate. Regarding the application of the new urgency ordinance, this application is for a small cell. And for small cells, we need to publish the at the requirements in advance if we're going to be imposing them on the project here. And in this case, yours, yours was not in place before the application was presented and completed. So um, while it, it's not subject to the new urgency ordinance, a number of the conditions, um, you know, that were put through with the new urgency ordinance were found to be appropriate for this site and have been added to the um, application um, as such.
And after reading that letter, you don't see any problem with uh, not changing the conditions?
With the, with the Verizon letter?
Yes.
Yeah, at this point, we're not recommending any um, any changes to those conditions. You can listen to uh, if they wanna, you know, speak on, on the issues or why their project is, is different, or why it shouldn't be subject to the conditions, you are welcome to consider that.
Okay, now.
Can I have a clarification on John's question here? Cause the, the code says that um, if they were not subject to final action by the city prior to the effective date of the ordinance. Well, basically the question is, is this or is this not subject to final action yet?
It says that it's uh, to the extent um, allowed by law, and since this is a small cell application, we need to apply the federal law about what we can apply, what standards we can apply to their application.
Okay, got that.
Okay, a couple non-technical questions, um. One is, and maybe you don't know Adrian, but is this the same type of pole as on Coast Highway between Carbon Beach and Los Flores Beach? It looks the same, but I don't know if it is or not.
Um, there's two utility pu- uh, are you talking about the two poles that have um, wireless facilities uh, next to each other?
Yeah, and they have the round thing on the top of them, just like.
Yes, um, well, these are similar, but they are different. Uh, these are light poles and the antenna radome, as they call it, are actually smaller in this case. Um, and they put the equipment um, sort of in the same uh, shroud. Whereas for the other facilities, the equipment was across the street. So similar, but not the same.
Okay, um, who owns the poles?
That'd be Edison, right? Tyler?
Yeah, in this case it was so called Edison.
Okay, so we don't own them, we can't, we, my question would be, we can't restrict them to dark skies. We have to own the pole to do that?
This is also on PC, PCH, right? So it, it's gonna be Caltrans.
The, the lighting requirements do not apply to uh, streetlights. So they, they were specifically exempt from the dark sky ordinance.
Okay, um, and can we move them to any location other than one, two, and three? The three alternatives.
Can they be moved to a different location? Um, I think these are the three locations that uh, they are claiming um, would uh, still work for them from a coverage perspective, well, or capacity perspective in this case. Um, locating them uh, further out is gonna have a, a detrimental effect on their ability to provide the capacity uh, to the area they need.
Well, I was thinking of, and this is just, I don't know how far you can move them, but I was thinking they'd be less intrusive on top of the pier instead of on the sidewalk, but we couldn't do that.
That's not part of our right of way.
No, I know, it's, it's uh, still have to prove the poll, whether it's on private life, property or public property. It was just, uh, just a question of whether we could consider things like that.
Okay, can we uh, ready to open up the public hearing on this? Get started, get the uh, get, let the applicant have their, their uh, say?
Sure.
Um, Kathleen, who have we got uh, uh, for the applicant team?
The applicant team, we have Rob Cersey, Daisy, Wee Kampang, and Myrna Alenda. And then we have two members of the public, Nicole McGinley and Monty Gordon.
Okay, um, let's let the applicants begin, whoever is gonna take the lead on this.
I believe that will be Rob Cersey.
Mr. Cersey? Are you up? Can you hear me?
Mr. Chairman? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you. You've got fifteen minutes. You can save as much of that fifteen uh, as you want for rebuttal if you choose to do so. And the fifteen covers your entire applicant team. So go.
Thank you, sir. Well, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Rob Cersey and I'm a consultant uh, who works for Verizon Wireless. My firm is called Bull Sang Architects. And my team is in charge of the engineering and permitting for the site. Uh, first I want to thank staff, they gave a very accurate and detailed explanation of the project before you. Uh, we are replacing existing SCE uh, streetlight. That streetlight is already in excess of the threshold that the city will allow for wireless talk communication facilities. And I can't replace it with a smaller pole because of the options that Southern California Edison provides. However, what we did do is propose to give you the most diminutive design that we could. Uh, Southern California Edison gives us very strict design parameters. And those design parameters uh, really look at what we can place on the pole and where those locations on the pole are accessible to us. Uh, our antennas have to go at the apex of a pole above the luminaire. And as you've probably seen in other applications, sometimes we also uh, place our boat radio units or RRUs below the luminaire on the side of the pole. Uh, in this instance, we decided to go with a design that would allow us to place our antennas and RRUs within a uh, radome that's completely concealed from view. So all of our antennas and all of our equipment will be concealed at the top of that pole within the shroud. Uh, that shroud is about sixty-six inches tall, so it will increase the overall height of the structure today. Um, probably about three inches, or three feet, six inches. So it's a very uh, uh, I hope minimized uh, increase in height. And will not create uh, visual uh, obstruction or an intrusion in the environment. A- as I look at what we're also doing, we also decided that we could use wireless uh, WTR technology to place our equipment in the right of way. So there will be no elements of this project that are at grade. Everything will be above grade or below grade. Uh, as I look at what we did for the alternate sites analysis, um, I'd like to draw your attention to um, I'd like to draw your attention to, uh, options one, two, and three. Option one is on the same side of the street as our existing streetlight. It's about a hundred and thirty feet to the east, and any design that we use on any of these streetlights would replicate the design you're seeing for, before you today. So from an aesthetic standpoint, there would be no advantage in using that streetlight, and in particular, at this one, our challenge here is that that streetlight would not provide the optimum, uh, vision or line of sight for us to address our area of concern, and that area of concern is the pier and also Surf Rider Beach. We're also attempting to densify our coverage along PCH, and so we've done that in what I think to be the, the least intrusive manner to do that. If we look at options two and three, those streetlights are both on the south side of PCH, they abut the beach, and they're probably within, I'd say forty feet of the sand, and they're also very close to the access point to, uh, the Malibu Pier itself. So when we looked at it, we thought designing anything to attach to either one of those two poles or those two streetlights would be much more visually intrusive and have a much greater impact on the, uh, motoring public and the residents in the area. Um, as I move forward, uh, we also looked at, um, some other options in the area, but there were just no option that would work. Uh, just to, uh, move, Daisy, can you move to the next slide, please? Um, as we look at this site, this site, um, as you can see, it's quite a distance away from the pier. That site would not provide the optimum coverage, uh, in order to address our deficiency in the network, and therefore, that site was disqualified in addition to the fact that there would be no advantage to the aesthetics if we used that streetlight. Uh, for right now, I'll terminate my part of the presentation on the technical side of it, I'm gonna hand this off to Daisy and let Daisy address some of the other issues that, uh, are of interest to the commission and to the public, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, um, good evening Commissioners, um, my name is Daisy Week-Peng with Verizon, and I would like to please request for the slides to move to the next slide, please. So appreciate the opportunity to present in front of you today, hopefully we can answer some of the questions and comments that were made prior to the presentation. As Rob mentioned, what we're here to do today is to provide a capacity solution as well as increase antenna signal coverage near Malibu Pier and Surf Rider Beach. Um, this will be a replacement Southern California Edison pole. Uh, part of the need for this area is a lot of its capacity, because it is conservatively estimated Malibu receives about thirteen million visitors a year, with your beaches such as Zoom are receiving about seven million visitors. So when there are peak areas and times when, um, it's summer, for example, or when there's a lot of happening events in the area, then our site, um, our challenge to meet that demand, and this is what Verizon is trying to do, is to build this location to help support during those times as well as times of emergency for redundancy, such as for wildfires when there's a lot of traffic on the road. So according to, um, Caltrans in twenty eighteen, this area receives an average daily traffic of approximately forty-seven thousand five hundred eighty average daily trips. And as such, uh, Verizon is again trying to meet that need for the very reason, next slide, please. So, um, in order to help support the argument a little bit regarding coverage and capacity, I'm presenting to you today a little bit more drill down version of our maps. So what you're seeing in the different color schemes here, poor is lavender, fair is yellow, and good is green. So based on this particular, um, coverage map that we're showing today, this existing coverage actually shows specifically for AWS only, which is a technology as mentioned by your consultant. So as a carrier, we do have options and different technologies that we have licenses to operate for, and we've determined that the addition of a particular technology to Malibu Pier O One will actually help support for capacity during times of need as well as for coverage. Currently, right now, the site that we have on the east side is Malibu Riviera Two, does not have, um, the technology AWS that we're proposing for Malibu Pier O One. So that particular coverage for Malibu, uh, Pier O One does not exist today, next slide, please. With the addition of Malibu Pier O One and the technologies that we're proposing, you can see that the color has changed from lavender and yellow to green in the area, so this is why we're proposing this particular solution for, um, the pier area, next slide, please. And this is another view to look at it with just the coverage provided and capacity provided by, um, Malibu Pier O One. And here you can see that, again, the area is green, yellow, and of course, to the ocean, lavender, but, um, that's part of the reason too, like, um, on the alternatives that we selected. We selected to go in the inland side of the ocean, not just for views and be the least obtrusive, but also for the fact that we are actually able to achieve better coverage capacity on the inland side. Next slide, please. I understand and completely, um, appreciate the comments that were made about the conditions and the reasons why that it was received at the last minute. Um, as indicated by staff, the conditions that were inserted to this particular project were conditions that are off of your new urgency ordinance. Verizon has actually provided city council and, uh, staff with, uh, letters showing, uh, the various comments that we had to the conditions, um, as it was shown in your urgency ordinance previously. But the two letters you received today specifically addressed two things. One of them is just merely reiterating federal and state law by which we are governed by for these small cells, and secondarily, the second letter talks specifically as to why we objected and provided solutions as to the conditions of approval. We did reach out to staff, um, to speak, uh, regarding these items, and we have spoken briefly about it, but staff, as they indicated today, is reluctant to override what the city council's, um, approval of the urgency ordinance conditions are, and basically suggested that we go to planning commission to discuss our objections, and this is why we're here today. Um, can I check on time, please, just to see how much time we have left?
Kathleen?
Yes, you have five minutes and thirty seconds.
Okay, Kathleen, okay, I'll take, um, the next couple of minutes and leave a little bit of time for rebuttal later. But, um, just going back to the condition, so for example, condition number one, all we're asking for here is a reasonableness standard, that is a standard that is pretty, um, common, um, to be requested. We're not objecting to paying, um, any of the attorney fees in this sense, but we are just asking for the attorney's fee to be reasonable. As for condition number nine, the biggest objection that we have to the conditions of approval here is actually number nine, and part of it is because according to the way it reads right now, it would allow Verizon only, um, thirty days from the start of construction to the end of construction to complete the construction bill for the small cell. Even with just the parts that Verizon's, and not necessarily SCE or the fiber permit sides, we are looking at approximately five to six months typically for a build for a small cell, and that's not even counting any possible conditions that could occur, such as an emergency or wildfire, or, um, or something, and, and availability of equipment or anything like that. As you all know, construction frequently will encounter delays, so Verizon is proposing a request to allow us to either have extension for cause or to, um, give us a little bit more time to be able to meet this condition. Now, the other conditions such as eleven eighteen and, um, eleven and eighteen, specifically, we're just stating here that, um, that we are going to build in conformance to whatever would hopefully be approved by resolution here today, that it isn't really necessary to have conditions eleven and eighteen in that sense. As far as twenty-one, um, Verizon will adhere to condition number twenty, which is related to twenty-one, and the fact that we're objecting to twenty-one is, uh, plainly audible is very ambiguous, next, please. So on this one right here, um, seems, uh, we're basically asking for notice to relocate, we're not saying that if the city determines that we need to relocate, that we won't, we're just asking for again time to plan and relocate the location. Um, but regarding thirty-two, we're only asking that, um, this will be modified so that if we do prevail on any, uh, action under this, uh, particular condition, that it be reciprocal. On number thirty-six, um, none of the design and plans that we are hoping to get approved for in resolution twenty-one thirty-seven involves undergrounding, so therefore thirty-six is inapplicable. And finally, number thirty-eight, actually, there's more, but thirty-eight, um, FCC defines what we put on signage. So we actually provided in the letter, um, what the FCC has on this, and Verizon will have the information necessary, including our twenty-four hour number, um, that will be on the particular signage requirement, next slide, please. So on this one, um, as was mentioned by Trevor earlier, um, the facility will be governed by Caltrans, therefore forty-three A, we will be, um, demonstrating to Caltrans the compliance required, um, not necessarily to the city. In number forty-four, there's no ADA requirements imposed here, therefore it's inac- inapplicable, and then on the final one, um, number fifty-three, automatic expiration, um, on number, um, fifty-three actually does not, um, apply here, um, because it is governed by number fifty-four, so. Sorry to have gone through that fairly quickly, but in the interest of time, I wanted to cover all of that, but I'm available to answer any questions that the commission may have, um, with regards to any of our letters or the project itself, and thank you for the opportunity.
You have two minutes remaining for rebuttal. And we have.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. And we have Nicole McGinley next.
Okay, can you unmute her?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Great, um, I actually would like to start with a point of clarification, cause I got a little confused, um, between what I read and what I heard, um, Adrian say, so I, I don't know if we can weave this in the conversation, or maybe you could just address it after the public comment. Um, but as I read the staff report, I see that they're using the old ordinance, it says it in the letter that I wrote you, I kind of pull out where they're using the old ordinance. Um, but then I heard Adrian say that they are applying some of the urgency ordinance, but then Trevor went on to say that the urgency ordinance can't be applied to this because it's a small cell, and, you know, the rest of his explanation you guys all heard, so I've just gotten a little bit confused, so I'm gonna go ahead and present what it is that I was hoping to convey, and then if you don't mind addressing that, that'd be great, um. If, as I read this, it was true that the old ordinance was used, I believe from reading this, that the urgency ordinance, as stated in the sections that I have up here, it should be used, it says here in section five, pending applications, all applications for wireless facilities in the public rights of way or modifications to existing wireless facility in the public rights of way, which are not subject to final action by city prior to the effective date of this ordinance, shall be subject and comply with all provisions of this chapter, and any design and placement standards adopted by the city council by resolution to the fullest extent permitted by applicable law. So this item before you tonight may have been deemed complete, um, as an application, but it clearly has not been deemed approved, because that's why we're here tonight, so I just, I feel in reading this and interpreting it in this way, that staff may have applied the wrong codes, regulations, and standards by using the old ordinance, and this needs to go back and apply the urgency ordinance and resolution codes and regulations. I feel precedent is being set here, and we need to get it right, right out of the gates, we've got a lot of new stuff coming through all this work that everybody's been doing, and, um, I know that Lonnie will address some of the issues that would kind of be different if the urgency ordinance was applied to this application, um, rather than what we are seeing in the staff report. So I thank you very much for your time, and I would love to try and understand a little bit more about the difference of what vehicle was being used to, um, figure this application out, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have, um.
Lonnie Gordon?
Lonnie Gordon, correct.
Can you unmute her?
Yes.
You have three minutes? Good. Have we got her?
Let me find out.
She doesn't seem to be responding to the ask to unmute.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Got you now.
Okay, I'm very sorry, I thought you were unmuting me, I didn't know I had to unmute myself, I'm sorry. So, good evening Commissioners and staff, and, um, just, uh, a point, actually, if you were all on hardwired computers, you wouldn't have the glitches that you had tonight, and we'll be happy to tell you how to do that. But moving along, it sounds like most of you saw Nicole's email, but I want to reiterate a short part, a short but important part at the end. However, I just got this information today too, and the public has not had time to review it. I believe a continuance might be in order, uh, because of the issues that we're gonna bring up. And I may sound like a broken record on this, but I have to impress you again that, especially in light of this application, that small cells are for delat- data delivery and data collection, not necessarily voice cell service. Is Verizon supplying data downloads so visitors to the beach and the pier can play games and watch movies instead of look at the ocean? Most people come to the beach to enjoy the ambiance and the water. And as Nicole said, the staff seems to have applied the wrong codes and regulations. The urgency ordinance and related resolution codes and regulations must be applied here. There are at least three problems with the application under the urgency ordinance resolution requirements. Sorry, I'm losing my voice today. First, they're replacing the pole and seeking an additional height, and thus need a waiver that must be made showing the requ- I'm sorry, must make the showing required by twelve point zero two point zero five zero, I hate all, all these numbers, E, um, showing substantial evidence that the denial of an application would, within the meaning of federal law, prohibit and effectively prohibit the provision of personal wireless services, or otherwise violate applicable laws and regulations. Verizon did not make that showing, and staff applied a much different and lower test under the prior rules, and could not carry the burden in any event, since this is the project for coverage enhancement. Verizon admits that there is no gap in coverage at present, so denial would not constitute an effective prohibition. And since this is already good coverage and the project is merely for additional capacity, which is on the memo page six, the project can be denied outright. Second, Verizon proposes to put the RRU in a shroud below the antenna. It's not within the antenna in the shroud, so the RRU must be undergrounded, urgency ordinance six A. And the setback is below the minimum requirement of four hundred and fifty to five hundred feet, I believe that, I, I'm not sure who said it, said it was three hundred and fifty feet. Third, Verizon does not meet the insurance requirements in the urgency ordinance, it looks like there's only one million dollars in liability, and the urgency resolution requires five million occurrence and six million aggregate. Because the wrong codes and regulations were applied, I ask that you kick this back to staff and apply the urgency ordinance and resolution codes and regulations to this application, thank you for my stuttering through this.
Thank you, Lonnie. Can we go back to Daisy for, you have two minutes, Daisy?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, now we've got you, yeah.
Okay, I apologize for that, I thought I had to unclick. Okay, um, I appreciate the comments from, um, the residents regarding, uh, the particular items they mentioned. So just to address really quickly the different items discussed, um, regarding, uh, voice versus data, there is such a thing as voice over LTE, so which is essentially using, um, get, getting voice over data. Um, so that is, uh, a technology that is available, um, to the carriers. In addition to, um, with regards to retroactive application of the code, um, just want to clarify that, um, what we're seeing here is a retroactive application of the conditions. Uh, our project was already completed, um, in September twenty twenty. Uh, there is a particular government code, uh, in state law, uh, which I think is six five nine four three, which prohibits retroactive application of codes on projects that were submitted prior. Um, in addition to that, federal law, um, also prohibits the same thing. This, all these points were sent to staff on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-one in a letter to the, um, staff outlining the objections with regards to that. Um, with regards to the requirement of coverage, uh, just want to reiterate on one of the letters, the reason we sent that, um, it talks about the one from our council, Ethan Rogers, it talks about densification of the network. So what Verizon is doing is what So what Verizon is doing is what we are allowed to do under federal law, which is to densify our network. We are not per se required, and I think staff also alluded to this earlier, as well as, I believe, Cetera Trini, and I apologize if I misidentified who said it. But essentially regarding, I think your consultant also mentioned it, that densification of the network is all the showing that a carrier has to do for small cells under federal law, and that is what we're doing here today. We are showing that we are not only providing a service at this location for AWS, which is not available currently in the area, which means therefore there's no coverage for that. And therefore, we are now providing coverage to fill that gap. And we're providing capacity relief for when there are extreme need as far as when there are plenty of visitors to your lovely city. And we would like to be able to provide redundancy to the network and provide the needed capacity when there are a lot of people in your area.
Okay, thank you. I don't, you may not be able to see the time clock on it, but your time has expired. So thank you for your presentation.
I'm so sorry, but thank you for letting me finish. Appreciate it.
Sure, right. Okay, anybody else, Kathleen, that wants to speak on this item?
No, that concludes public comment for this item.
Okay, and we'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the commission table. I don't see it. There's a hand, John.
One thing I would like to discuss is the choice between the three. And it appears from what they said that option three is out, it's too far away. But option one is right on the sidewalk in front of the proposed new motel. And as I say, that's proposed, so we don't have to consider it. But that's a major problem intersection. It's going to have two more curb cuts in it, and we don't know where they are exactly. So this pole may, and I say may, it may not interfere with our choices on how to get people in and out of a motel if it's, if it's approved. So I looked at option two, which will never, ever, ever change because it's state property. And it's a state park and it's painted red and there are no future curb cuts. So I think we should discuss whether or not there's an advantage to moving it to number two due to future, possible future complications. I don't know if anybody else has a comment on that, but that's what I think we may want to consider.
Okay, Craig?
Yeah, it's sort of a threshold question, but related to what John just said. LIP disallows any telecom facilities within five hundred feet of a park. And Surf Rider is on the state government's website classified as a park. So part of, part of the question would be, where exactly is the easternmost boundary of the Malibu Lagoon slash Surf Rider State Beach Park? Is it, I've seen several different maps. One shows the state land that is east of the pier as being contiguous to or part of the state park, which would render all of these sites unusable for being within five hundred feet. Or I've also seen maps that show the intervening houses there across from Jack in the Box and so forth as being separate lots that would break up the park from the state land on the east side. So I guess as a threshold question, is that chunk of land on the east side part of the park? Or is it considered a park in its own right?
I can probably answer that for you. I'm on the board of the Adamson House, which is a state park that joins Surf Rider. And Surf Rider includes, it's a state park that includes the pier, goes all the way to Malibu Beach Inn. That parking lot belongs to the Pierce Surf Rider State Park.
So why that?
On the other side of the Adamson House is another state park, which is a state called a state.
Lagoon.
Malibu Lagoon State Park. But there are three contiguous parks there. The houses themselves are separate lots, but they don't break up the property.
Okay, so if this is a park under LIP three point fifteen point five N, no telecom, wireless telecom facility within five hundred feet of the park, unless there's a showing made that there's a clear need for the facility and that no technically feasible alternative site exists. I don't think, that may be true, but I don't think we've seen that showing.
Adrian or Tyler, was this issue considered by staff?
Yeah, um, so it's, it's in the, it's in the right of way. And so, you know, there's different design criteria for poles in the right of way. And, you know, a long PCH, all of the beach in Malibu is, is, is a park, essentially. Some of it is, well, some of it, it's, it's public beach, right? But some of it is deemed a park. You look at our LCP maps, they kind of show that whole area of concern as a park. So I was also a little confused with where to draw the line. According to our GIS maps, it's five hundred, it's outside of five hundred feet because if you don't include those houses, then yes, it's not within five hundred feet of Surf Rider Beach. But then if you include those houses, it's within three hundred.
I think if you include that, if you say it stops at the edge of those houses, then the alternate sites may well be okay, or at least the eastern ones. But I think the close one might still be within five hundred feet. But nonetheless, it, several maps I see integrate the section to the east as part of Surf Rider. So, and that is distinctly a state park as opposed to the rest of the beach throughout all the private parts of PCH. So I think that's a park and I think the LIP requires the showing here. It, it doesn't say, you know, parks that next to public right of ways are not subject to this provision or something like that.
So maybe, how about if we ask the applicant whether they, this is an issue they've considered and whether they have a response to it? Can you unmute Daisy?
Yes, but I will actually defer to Rob because he did the site building for these locations. So we would be more intimately familiar with that. Rob, are you still on? Can you please answer?
Uh, he's got, we've got to unmute him.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, in particular Commissioner Hill, we definitely looked at that as part of our analysis. And we also provided a statement to staff showing that there is a need for the site and that need goes back to our capacity. Once again, the need is there to layer and densify the network because of the man placed on the existing site, which is about seven hundred and fifty feet away. That site is overburdened and cannot handle all the traffic that is being demand on that site. So that is our, our stipulation for the need for the site.
But is, is it not that, that, that the need is based on whether there's coverage there? And we've seen based on the LTE coverage maps and testimony in the staff report that there is good coverage there already. And I don't, I guess, I don't know where it would be justified in the code to say that the desire to increase capacity is a need per se. You've got, you've got coverage there already. Okay, Trevor?
I can, I can all, well, I can also address that.
Well, let's, let's, we're not getting, no, 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 specific questions are asked. Trevor, you're up.
Sure, I, I just want to clarify, I've seen this gap in coverage is not the, the standard here for a small cell. You know, the test is if it materially inhibits the provision of service. And the way that, that test is described is, it says that this, this test is met not only when filling a coverage gap, but also in densifying a wireless network, introducing new services or otherwise improving service capabilities. Under the California Payphone standard, a state or local legal requirement could materially inhibit service in numerous ways, not only by rendering a service provider unable to provide an existing service in a new geographic area or by restricting the entry of a new provider in providing service in a particular area, but also by materially inhibiting, materially inhibiting the introduction of new services or the improvement of existing services. Does that, the prohibition includes materially inhibiting additional services or improving existing services? So we're bound by that because this is a, a small cell facility we're dealing with here.
How is it that what you're saying is not, they can put one anywhere they, anywhere they want to put one can be deemed a need?
Well, we're dealing with, with, with this particular, you know, situation here. So, you know, how it would apply in other circumstances, I couldn't tell you. But in this one, you saw the graphs that they're putting up and that's the argument they're making. It's not that we can't just say because you could get a regular cell service in this, in this situation that, you know, that's sufficient. We have to use the proper test for the cell, for the small cells.
So if they say they want it, we have to treat it as though that just means they need it?
No. No.
All right, so.
You know, we are all familiar with who wrote these rules and, you know, how that process came about, so.
Yeah. Yeah, let me just make one point on the, on the, the application of the retroactive application of the, of the urgency statute or urgency ordinance. It's been our, our rule forever. And in fact, the applicant is correct that state law does prohibit retroactive application of, of ordinances. And in fact, if you think about it, why would we need to have a zoning ordinance at all? We'd simply say, bring your, your project forward and if we like it, we'll write rules that allow us to allow you to build it. Then if we don't like it, we'll write rules that say that you can't build it. So it, it, it's absolutely fundamental to our process that, that if an application is deemed complete, that the, the rules that are in existence as of that time are what are, are the rules that are applied. And, and maybe the problem is that, that the, the urgency ordinance talked about to the extent permitted by law. Well, the problem is that the law doesn't permit it. So that's, that's sort of how we end up on that. Further comments, John?
Yeah, I just, the applicant listed all the, the questions on legal stuff. And I just wanted to go over three of them with Trevor. Most of them seem like they've already been taken care of by state law or whatever. But why would we only give somebody thirty days to complete a project when we've had projects take eight, nine years? Is that detrimental to the, to the city? To say you got thirty days, but it can be extended for cause? We can have a fire, we can have this, we can have that. It seems to limit us and then we'd have to go through the whole process all over again. Is there a reason why it should be thirty days?
The thirty days, I believe, comes out of the, the urgency ordinance itself. But in a case such as this where they're presenting evidence of how long it'll take for construction, it would be appropriate, you know, I'd actually recommend that you adjust that thirty days to a period that you think is a reasonable period for them to be able to construct it. I think the purpose of that section is to ensure that someone doesn't start the facility and then leave it half-built, especially for facilities in the right of way. It's important that they continue construction, you know, expediently and that it's always in sort of a safe condition. So, you know, if, you know, you, you've heard what, what, what they requested and, you know, what they, they stated. And they wanted a hundred and eighty days. They said it takes three to six months, I think. So if you want to, I would suggest you, you put in what you say, see based on the facts here of what reasonable amount of time would be for them to construct it to just ensure that they, that once they start it, that they do work quickly to, to do it and that, then it also gives them an impetus to plan it out so that they can, you know, get the whole thing done in one fell swoop.
Okay, if, if, well, is it better for us? Because we don't know anything about the construction of cell towers. It's better for us to do it or to have, the words they used was extension for cause from the staff? I'm just thinking of what's easier for the city to do. And maybe I should ask Tyler that or, or Adrian.
Yeah, Adrian, do you want to weigh in on, on your preference on, on dealing with it?
I, I think Commissioner Mas, I think that's a good idea to just restrict it to a due cost request for extension and that way they can come in and make their justification to us. And if it makes sense, then we would grant them an extension and we would be looking at these on a case by case.
Okay, now my next one was number thirty. Notice to relocate. And I don't remember the whole, the whole thing about that, but wouldn't we need an notice to relocate? This is number thirty.
Yeah, they want to have, they want to have a year's notice of if we're telling them they have to relocate.
And why, my, what I wonder is why we would do that and what the timing would be and why we would not have that language in there? Either.
It probably doesn't make a lot of sense for this project to make a change to that condition. I think that mostly applies to installations on utility pools where there is a really high likelihood of those pools to be eliminated or, you know, utilities underground. In this case, you know, the relocation to a new streetlight pole location will be fairly quickly done.
So are you saying we should drop this or we should?
I don't think we need to change the condition.
Okay. Right now, the condition doesn't mention a date.
Okay. Then the last one is signage. They had mentioned that the signage is mandated by federal law. So do we need that? Because we can't, we can't mandate the signage, apparently.
This is condition thirty-eight, Commissioner?
Yes.
I believe Adrian corrected for one, but we, we've required this on, on applications in, in the past, even before their new ordinance. Is that correct? I'm, I'm pretty sure this, it may have, the language may have changed, but the signage, I believe, was similar requirement.
Well, she was pretty, pretty clear that they had to put up with the feds told them to put up.
If, if, I guess one question could be, well, all right, if, if signage is mandated by the FCC or whatever governing body, can we require additional signage? Or does the FCC occupy the field and, and their signage is what there is and nothing else is going to be added to it? Have you got any sense of that, Trevor? I mean, it seems to.
Well, I'm not sure if there's a preemption issue here. Adrian, have you guys looked into this? I, you know, I, I saw this, this afternoon. You know, you could, you could add, add to that language, you know, unless preempted by federal law to prevent that. We already have language that prevents illegal conditions, but you want to be more specific there. That would avoid any issue.
That sounds okay.
Okay.
A way to approach it?
Then, is there any, does anybody want to weigh in on location or are we set on number one?
I'm, I'm troubled by the, the, putting the thing on the opposite side of the street, John. It, it just, it makes it much more visible to me. And I realize, I appreciate the issue of the, the potential motel, but, but sort of cross that bridge when we come to it, kind of thing, as far as I'm concerned.
I, I can also answer that question since I'm the case planner on that project. It, it is not in front of the, any of the curb cuts, that cuts they're requesting. They're actually reusing one of them and making it bigger that it's on the Malibu Inn site. And then the other axis is on the eastern side of the property. So this would be somewhere in the middle of the two driveway cuts that will be used for access to the Malibu Inn motel.
Okay. So should I try a motion or is there more discussion?
David, I think I see your hand up.
Yeah, I was going to move the adoption of the staff recommendation subject to the changes that John mentioned that were accepted.
And I will second that and, and enumerate those changes as number nine should include extension for cause with, with the staff. I don't know how you say that, Trevor, you can correct that. And number thirty-eight, signage unless prohibited by federal law. Add that to that sentence.
I've got lots more.
Okay, we'll get to you.
Okay, if David accepts that, then that's the motion, my motion.
I do.
Trevor, you have that, do you have the motion?
Yeah, I, let me just. Yeah, I let me just tinker with the language for to add to number nine. If you want to hear out. Commissioner Hill, in the meantime, I will come back with the exact language when you're.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, well, this is for Trevor. It's a sort of a threshold question, just to clarify. The finding A three, that this is the least environmentally damaging alternative. In this context, we don't do what you do in an EIR where one of the alternatives is the no action alternative, correct? We don't. We're not allowed to consider. Not doing this project would be less environmentally damaging. Right?
The 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 problem here is that, you know, that there's they're saying, you know, they presented evidence that. You know, they need to upgrade this facility. And, you know, the no project would prevent them from being able to do that. They could put us in conflict with federal law.
Because, I mean, just as a matter, as a point of fact, I don't think the this is the least environmentally damaging option because. We've already acknowledged that in in our own statutes that there is, for example, EMF pollution, since we've required pollution insurance. So it may or may not be harmless, but it's. Or, I mean. I think we've decided it's not harmless, so there would be a less damaging option here. Be that as it may, I think I think we're not going in that direction. I just wanted to call that out. On variance finding B one. Where there are to be special circumstances or exceptional characteristics applicable. What are those? What is special or exceptional about why we would allow the extra height here? Because it seems I have some thoughts about. How you could get away with this and do it at a shorter height. That would be aesthetically preferable. And I and I want to talk about those technical questions when we get to it. But before that, what are the special circumstances or exceptional characteristics that would justify this height variance? Want to answer that, Tyler?
Yeah, so the way the way we looked at it was that aesthetically. In order to do that, so first there are separation requirements that the California Public Utilities Commission requires. And so they have to meet that. As Rob mentioned in his presentation, there are certain designs that Soca Edison will only accept. And in this case. The aesthetic kept it kind of uniform. You I don't know if you've seen, but there are different designs for thicker poles, right? In which perhaps maybe the twenty eight feet might be able to do. The existing pole is already thirty one feet in height, and so it's already over twenty eight feet. And so in order for them to maintain. That same street light level where the lights protruding from and keep a similar aesthetic. To the, you know, general design along PCH. This is why we felt that they were within their limits to apply for the variance.
Maybe I can ask Rob sourcing some technical questions about the height and what they could or couldn't do with that? Can we can we get him unmuted and?
Rob Cersey?
Yeah. It seems to me there might be a couple other options, and you could tell me why any of these are impossible. One would be to put the RRU equipment in ground. With the notion that, I mean, I I don't think that's involved in the actual transmission. I think that's just the antenna. So to my mind. If that's true, the only difference would be you might need a slightly higher gauge of. Of wiring to overcome the thirty feet of impedance there, but that wouldn't be a big deal. Could is there no way that you could put the RRU in ground so that the height of the that would just bring the antenna down a little bit?
That's a very good question, Commissioner. So an RRU is an element that actually generates heat. So there needs to be some type of a passive cooling. I place it underground, there's no opportunity for that to happen with passive cooling.
Okay.
So it does not.
That's convincing. What about could you, since you have to replace the pole anyway? Could you not design a pole with both the RRU? And the antenna, or maybe just the RRU? In line, but beneath the height of the point where the arm branches out for the luminaire. So that you basically have a. A hollow cylinder that instead of being. Concrete, the composite concrete that the pole is made out of. For that section of a few feet, you would have some maybe some very thin steel. Supports that would leave the pole basically open so you could fill. Those couple of feet with the RRU and possibly the antenna. Basically integrate that into the body of the pole because. All the luminaire needs, if I understand, I know something about electricity, is three or at most four different wires, depending on how it's wired. And those could just be in their own little separate conduit that would come right down through the the antenna and or RRU section. Because is there no way that that stuff could be integrated into the pole?
Commissioner, I think I know some pole manufacturers that would love to have your advice. So. There is a structure that is capable of doing that. It's called an integrated pole, and it carries the same type of design criteria you're discussing. However, I think Tyler mentioned it, and I may have mentioned during my presentation. Southern California has a very limited palette of options for us to choose from. They will not allow us to use that pole for a streetlight. So our our hands are tied. We cannot propose that on an Edison owned facility.
That 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 seems like especially you're now having called out that that's an existing possible thing to do. It seems unfortunate that we would have to accept the extra five or so feet of height. Just because Edison says your hands are tied.
Well, here's the other challenge. So I can. Even if we could accommodate it, the only way I could do that is if I added another vertical element in the right away. And that would be a probably a less. Favorable option for the most part, especially in an area such as this where we've got such valued aesthetics in the area.
Why would you need another vertical element?
Because I can't replace an Edison streetlight with that type of design.
I see. I see. You're saying you need to put it on a separate pole. Okay. Okay. Okay, I think I think that satisfies my technical questions on that. Can we commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Cersey. Can we commissioners, can we? Without violating the the law and the spirit of the fact that this was deemed complete in September. Could could we impose any any of those conditions that we just added to the residential ordinance, like the fire safety application? Requirements. And or the pollution insurance kinds of things. I mean, those don't affect necessarily the. The structure or the design of the pole or anything, but more in the nature of documentation and and legal. The legal context of this thing. Can we could we condition any of those things?
I think the question's to you, Trevor.
Yeah, so. The I think you're referring to the new wireless ordinance and those.
Yeah, the Susan Foster, Tony Simmons, those things, the things they suggested that the council adopted for the residential ordinance.
Yeah, so that's not part of the the current right away ordinance right now, I believe, Adrian.
But if we're if we're, this is a CDP and we can impose conditions and the city hasn't sort of already decided that those are the kinds of things we like.
Yeah.
Are we are we precluded because it it was deemed complete or? Yeah.
So I I believe a number of these conditions have already been included. In this, and yes, you can add conditions to it if they are, you know, appropriate and reasonably called for, you know, by the project itself as a condition of the project. So. If I I Adrian, if you want to chime in about, you know, what was put in, because I believe a number of these things were already added. If there was some specific additional condition that I you're interested in adding here, you know, we could discuss it.
But Adrian?
Yeah, I think what. The conditions were or the. There were some middle requirements that I think we're talking about, and so it doesn't really apply here because these applications. Have been deemed complete and ready for a decision. So. I think for the most part, all the conditions have been implemented here.
So that might be more a matter of going forward and looking at the next applications as they come in and saying.
That's.
We've already figured out some things we'd like to do in the residence. Can we? Yeah. Although there is at least one here that would make sense that Nicole Nicole suggested that the. Right now, the liability is limited to a million dollars and the urgency resolution requires five or six million dollars. That's something that we could just put in there, right? Correct.
Yes, you could.
It seems like if if that's something we've decided in another context is appropriate for these things, we might as well put it here, too. I mean, not not being an insurance expert, I I don't know, you know. What the implications are, but it seems like the city has already decided that's a sensible thing to put in. So I guess.
John?
Yeah.
You know, that discussion was a little while ago, but it was my. Remembrance. There was some talk about whether or not that insurance was available. And. The question is, do we? And this is a question of Trevor, do we want to jump ahead and and? Put our our legal neck out? Before we know what's going on? Because this is one pole of one hundred ninety or something that are coming along?
Yeah, if you if you want to increase the amount of the insurance, you know, that's probably okay. If you're if we're adding a new type of insurance, that might not be the the. Recommend maybe not doing that at this point, since you haven't given Verizon a chance to object on that issue. It wasn't proposed to them before.
There were a couple different. There was some kind of liability insurance. I'm not sure how it was specified, and then I think that's separate from. The EMF pollution insurance that was added sort of at the last minute on the residential.
Adrian, can you point us to the condition or provision in the proposed resolution that talks about? Required insurance? Or Trevor or Tyler, rather?
Yeah, I I think we actually, if I recall, we we left that one out. We can add it. We we added all the conditions except for the insurance because we weren't sure. If this late in the game was. You know, we were allowed to, but if if Trevor's saying we can't.
Right?
There isn't an ordinance, yeah. But but I. Sorry, go ahead.
Haven't we always required insurance as part of these approvals?
That that is a new requirement based on our new ordinance, Trevor.
And it it says it looks like it was specified at one million, but the ordinance talks about five or six for different things in the aggregate.
But that was before it was deemed after it was deemed complete, correct?
I believe on the applicant's plans, they 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 say that they will supply the one million in insurance, but we didn't make it a condition of approval in the in the resolution.
That's right.
Okay.
So again, the question would be, can you do it after it's deemed complete now, or is that something to put on a list? Of things that we have ready to go for the next application?
My inclination would be to say yes, that's something to put on the list for something that we want to impose. If if there is, there is no statutory requirement for it, the fact that. They offered to put it in or it's on their plans. Doesn't really give us much of a leg to say, oh, fine, that's good, but. You know, let's multiply by five times.
Adrian, how many applications do we have that have actually already been deemed complete?
I think tunnel is the exact number because we're still working on some of them right now.
There there were five administrative. Decisions. Or six, rather, and there were there are ten CDPs that will come before you.
So if we. How many of those are deemed complete right now?
All ten.
All ten.
Yeah, so if we if we decide that we can't impose it a little extra insurance like has been recommended. On this one, then we can't can't do it on any of them.
Well, we have one hundred eighty to go after that.
How many to go?
When I read the paper, I don't know. They said there were one hundred ninety locations that were coming forward.
To give you a heads up about a timeline, we you will see a lot of these in in the near future. We have one in May seventeen. We have. Four that will become for you in June. We have another four that will come before you in July, or. The July ones are a little bit tentative. There's a couple of things working out, but for sure, we have one. May seventeen and four projected in in June.
If you want to move forward with this one without the insurance, staff can bring back, you know, more fulsome analysis of this issue and options and and discuss that with the applicants for the the future applications as an option for you as well.
Yeah, I mean, one one concern is if we don't implement what we can now, they'll come back later and say, well, you didn't. Implement it on those first ones, so you can't do it on these later ones.
That that isn't an argument that you have.
Okay.
And I just in that context, I I do remember like John said that. There was a question of whether. EMF pollution insurance was available, whether anybody was writing it. So we do want to be. Have at least some basis. If we want to move forward with that.
Oh, I I I'm sorry. I see I have one more technical question that Rob Cersey could answer. If we can get him back on.
Go ahead, Craig.
Given that this is pretty close to the hotel or motel, whatever it is, and that it would be on. It would have several floors, so it would have some people sleeping at the same elevation that the. The horizontal omnisphere of radiation is passing. Is there any provision for either now as a condition or later adding to the existing facility? Some shielding on. Ninety degrees of the spread, so it would be. No longer an omnisphere pattern, but. A little bit more polarized, so you wouldn't be shooting it right into the hotel about, you know, fifty feet or a hundred feet away at the same level. Could that be shielded?
You're unmuted, Rob.
Okay, you know, maybe I should have Daisy from Verizon answer that question. If she can, I'll I'll answer it.
Hey, can you Catherine? There you go. Thank you. Daisy?
Yes, Commissioner Hill, thank you for your question. The antennas right now are actually emitting towards PCH. They're not going to be emitting towards the building. So as it is proposed right now, they're directionally facing PCH. So they they shouldn't be facing the the building if it's built. Now, however, if that is a concern, once the building is built. Verizon, you know, if the city reaches out and gives us adequate time to do so, we'll be happy to do an updated study.
Just okay, and just for the record, the the coverage maps do show an omnisphere pattern and the technical. Diagrams and drawings showing the radius of the they're all clearly an omnisphere, so. But if you if that can be adjusted after the fact, and you can get in there and, you know, line the cage with shielding or something, then that that would. We can address that later.
So shielding is not something per se like Rob was saying earlier. SE only gives us X amount of flavors that we can do. Edison takes into consideration design and as well as. They basically take into consideration actual structural integrity as well. So to add anything of that element. To SCE designs would have to go through a full vetting with SCE, so that's one. Secondly, just to also clarify, just because the the antenna that we are proposing here is actually an Omni antenna, and it's not a directional antenna. So just to if that clarifies it a little bit, but in any case, if the concern is the antennas facing the structure that is to be built. Verizon, like I said, if that is a concern, we always operate in compliance with FCC. But we are happy to do an additional study once the building is built, just to provide reassurances. That it's still operating in the way it was intended, which is to operate safely.
Okay, Trevor, I don't know if that's anything we can even imagine conditioning now, or if that's just the when it comes up, they they'll have to deal with it at the time.
Yeah, the the problem is we can't, you know, base conditions about a project that actually hasn't even been, you know, the application is not even complete on it at this point in time, so. You know, when that application comes forward, then, you know, they could they can propose, you know, changes or if they need to move, you know, utilities in the right away. You know, that can be done. They usually have to pay the cost of doing that, but. You know, until that their project's out there, you know, we we take what's actually built or approved, you know.
Okay, question for Trevor. What if hypothetically we decided to vote no on the basis that they haven't demonstrated the need to put this within five hundred feet of a of public park? If we to vote no on this, what happens? I mean, isn't this? Does it end up getting deemed approved federally anyway, or what what's the scope of our? Our discretion here?
Well, you have an obligation, you know, to, you know, apply. You know, apply the law and the, you know. If you're not able to make the findings, you need to demonstrate why you can't make those findings, then they would have the ability to appeal that to the. Then they would have the ability to appeal that to the city council and then take a writ of mandate to go challenge that decision in court. So that would be the the process, you know, if you went, if you move forward with the denial.
How does that deemed deemed approved language work? Maybe Robert Ross can help us on that, if he's still there. There is language about how if you don't if you don't act within the the time limits, it is deemed approved.
That's correct, sir. You've got ninety days to for one of these applications. If you don't do anything within that ninety days, on the ninety-first day, they can start construction.
What if we say no, can't do it, can't build it? Does that does that trigger the the same limits or is the process more?
You're still within the nine, you still have ninety days. You've got to give a good reason why.
All right.
You've you've deemed it. You didn't like it. And and again, the tough part about this is is it's a small cell and it's in the it's in the row, which makes it doubly difficult because, like I said, the carriers are changing what they're using the frequencies for. These these units are going to put out point five watts. So when you start saying that the hotel's going to be, you know, a hundred feet away, you're going to get some signal, but you're not going to get anything in excess of the FCC's limits. Not even close. And matter of fact, you've got to be within two feet of these antennas in order for it to to register probably.
Well, it's three feet for the the hot zone, as it were, but if somebody was actually sleeping all night in it, I think maybe there might be cause to think that, you know, but that be that as it may, that's sort of beside the point.
Right. I think, yes, Trevor.
I also want to clarify that, you know, if it's deemed granted, there's debate about the the remedy that, you know, if they just started constructing, we would probably object and potentially red tag them and have it. They might need a court order in order to demonstrate it. It's a complicated process, but it would put the city in an unfavorable position if we did burn through that shot clock without reaching a final decision.
I mean, personally, I I I look back to the vision and mission statements and the fact that, you know, we're constitutionally, as it were, issuing the suburban conveniences and so forth. And to me, that means cellphone coverage is all important and for safety and all kinds of things. But the data part of it, I don't know. And so I don't I don't feel like I've seen a clear need. And they can say, yeah, well, we we need, we want more capacity. But to me, that doesn't feel like need within the bounds of what the vision and mission statement would want. So I'm kind of on the fence about whether the proximity to the park is a disqualifying factor here.
Trying to think, but I think when the vision and mission statement was written, we didn't have any cellphone service. So, all right, so let's 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 get, let's get, we've got a motion. We've got, it's been seconded. Let's let's call the.
Motion, so it would be staff's recommendation with the following changes. On condition nine, you would insert the following sentence, which would be this thirty-day period may be extended by the planning director if the applicant can demonstrate that construction has been diligently pursued, but due to circumstances beyond the applicant's control, construction cannot be completed within thirty days of when it is commenced. If that language works for you, I would suggest that you would insert it after this sentence that would say the installation and construction authorized by a wireless ROW permit shall conclude, including any necessary post-installation prepares and a restoration to the right of way within thirty days following the day construction commenced. So that sentence would be added to clarify it. And then on condition thirty-eight, which is about the signs at the end of the the paragraph, I would I believe you would want the following language to be inserted would say, if such signs are prohibited by federal law, they shall not be required. Do those conditions reflect the intention of the motion and the secondor?
David, you with the your motion?
Yes, they do.
John, you, okay. All right, we've got the motion. Kathleen, you need to call the roll now for us, please.
Ice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Namaza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Since I don't see clear need by the park, I'm going to say no.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Second it, I'll second it. Kathleen, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Maaza?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Adios.
Adios. Stay safe. How do I get out of here?